Blue or yellow?
If we're having a public hearing, uh, it's yellow.
And when does that, that happen?
I'm sorry? Uh, yeah, well, it depends. Is it for a particular item? What is it about? Blue or yellow?
If we're having a public hearing, uh, it's yellow.
And when does that, that happen?
We're at 7:01.
Mayor Fahet?
Here.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Here.
Councilman Dion?
Here.
Councilman Lamos?
Here.
Councilman Perez Crespo?
Here.
There is a quorum present.
Okay, if you are able, let's please stand for the invocation by Vice Mayor George Santin.
George, thank you for all the many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Today, I pray for our mayor, and all levels of city officials, including in particular this city council. I am asking you would graciously grant us the wisdom to govern amid conflicting interests, issues of our times with true needs of our residents. I ask all this in your name, our Lord Jesus Christ.
Please remain standing and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. All right, we will move on to the agenda and order of business. Are there any items that anybody wishes to move or pull from the consent agenda? All right.
I'm removing that from the agenda. 12E.
Okay, so we are removing 12E from the agenda. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
All against, please say no. All right, the agenda is approved. And now we move on to awards and presentations. I'd like to call up our esteemed state senator, Honorable Senator Brian Avila, who is going to speak to us about the outcomes of our latest legislative session. So, thank you.
So, good evening to everyone, to the council, mayor, to those in the audience, those watching. Just wanted to kind of give just a brief update in terms of what occurred and what were the accomplishments this past legislative session. So, for those that don't know, it was a, it was an unusual session in every sense of the meaning. We had to actually extend session by several weeks, and session was concluded last week, where normally it would conclude the first week of May. So, you know, it was an unusual session from that standpoint and several others. I will say that the final product in terms of the legislative budget was $115.1 billion budget, which, believe it or not, it is actually $3.5 billion less than the previous years, meaning that we are returning more of the hard-earned money of our taxpayers back to them and to their families, because ultimately, our belief is that they can spend it a lot better than state government can. So, that was, in terms of the budget, the final number that we landed on. Some of the things that came from budget discussions in particular were also a, really something that is very unique in terms of state government. We passed an initiative where the state government would eventually, if there are no, you know, obviously a natural disaster or some other thing that, you know, comes out of nowhere, whether it's another pandemic or, or some other unforeseen natural disaster or disaster in general, the state of Florida with an initiative would be the first state to be completely debt-free. And that is an initiative that we passed, which would essentially create a recurring paydown of about $830 million each and every fiscal year. And that'll eventually, over time, allow us to become the first and only state to be debt-free. To put, you know, in terms of our state, our state debt, to put it into perspective right now, each and every resident of the state of Florida, if you attach the debt per capita, it's roughly around $600 to $700 per person. The federal government, if you were to put that in context per capita, the debt per person is astronomical. It is six figures. So, what we're doing in the state of Florida is very unique, which is why you're seeing more and more people move to the state of Florida. It is why you're seeing state migration at record levels. You know, certainly, we saw record levels right after the pandemic, but we continue to see a lot of inflow from other states, particularly the Northeast, and actually, believe it or not, California. So, right now, to get a U-Haul from the state of Florida to California, it's, for a week, it's about $500. Now, if a California resident wants to rent a U-Haul to come to the state of Florida, it's $5,000. So, that tells you where the flow is going, where the people are going, and it's really because a lot of the things that we're doing at the state level, where we're creating a very business-friendly environment, and we're also lowering our debt and making sure that the taxpayers have more of their hard-earned money in their pockets. With regards to the tax package this year, we, we passed a very broad-based tax relief package, which amounts to about $1.3 billion that are going back to residents in various ways. Some of the various ways that many of you and many of us are very familiar with are back-to-school initiatives. So, once the school year is about to ramp up and start again, usually, we have about two weeks or a week where we basically don't have any sales tax on school materials, so that parents, families, kids, students can get the materials that they need without having to pay that state sales tax. Some other initiatives that many of you are probably familiar with, year-round disaster preparedness. So, as we know, you know, hurricane season is right now, and, you know, hopefully, obviously, this year, you know, we still don't know what could happen today, tomorrow, next week, but it's always imperative upon us to be prepared for whatever comes. And so, our belief is that, you know, we shouldn't have a state sales tax on materials that our residents will need in order to be prepared. So, we have that initiative in place, and that's part of that $1.3 billion. We also eliminated any sales tax related to state park admissions. So, whenever, you know, certainly, our families, we want to go to any of our beautiful state parks, there is no reason why you should be paying a state sales tax to enjoy that benefit which you already paid for through your taxes. So, that is why, moving forward, you will not have to pay, our residents will not have to pay a state sales tax on state park admissions. And then, there's some other various initiatives. One very important one, especially for businesses, we are right now currently the only state, the only state that has what is called a business rent tax. And that deals with commercial properties, and we are unfortunately the only state that has that in place. After this tax package, and hopefully, once the governor signs this tax package, we will no longer have that distinction. We will no longer have a business rent tax, which will, again, have more dollars go back into various pockets of our residents, of our businesses, of our families, so that they can spend it better. Some initiatives that, and I want to be very, very brief, because I want to be, obviously, you know, I'm very appreciative of the time that you've given me just to update you. A couple of the initiatives that I worked on, sponsored and passed, one of them deals with what's called the Spectrum Alert. And this essentially creates a mechanism where an alert would go out for children that they suffer from autism spectrum disorder. So, right now, we have, we have that in place, but for, for seniors, for people that are over, well, adults and seniors, so over 18. This would encompass and capture those, those children that are, and those young adults that are 18 and below. And that's, that's one of the things that I was very proud to pass and sponsor this legislative session, and it was signed by the governor, so it will become law on the 1st of July. And then, just another one that I wanted to highlight for your awareness, it's titled "Human Trafficking Awareness." Now, we know that certainly in South Florida, we deal with a lot of that. I know our, certainly, our police, the chief, Chief Castillo, and, and all of the, you know, brave men and women in uniform, they've certainly had to deal with this along 36th Street, right? And so, raising awareness on human trafficking, I think, is imperative, not just for our community, but really for, for the state of Florida. Right now, we rank number three in the entire nation in terms of new human trafficking cases. And that's a distinction that certainly nobody wants. So, this initiative is to make sure that our kids, because they're in an environment, in a school environment in particular, where there's a lot of people that, a lot of, whether it's, you know, teachers, administrators, school personnel, it's really meant to give them awareness and provide them with the proper training in order to identify any sort of human, human trafficking issues that may be occurring with our children. So, that's one of the initiatives that the governor has signed into law and will be effective July 1st as well. Some other things that I was able to work on and, and worked with my colleagues extensively and co-sponsored, a couple of them are, especially for schools and our student athletes, is a bill that would require EKGs, those assessments for our student athletes, to be provided, right? We've heard of several cases throughout the state of Florida, where an athlete, all of a sudden, during a game, for whatever reason, just collapses. And it turns out to be something that could have been identified had they had an EKG. And being that Florida is the third-largest state in the Union, being that Miami-Dade County is larger than 15 states by itself, we have a lot of student athletes. And I think it's imperative that we do everything possible in order to make sure that those student athletes, you know, our, our kids are, you know, have those resources available in order to identify those things before tragedy occurs. Another one, which maybe some of you might have seen in the news, it deals with, when we have a natural disaster, it gets chaotic. And, and I think we, you know, certainly, once you're, once you're in an evacuation zone, it becomes even more of a chaotic situation. But even in those situations, I think it's, it's the responsibility of the homeowner and of the residents to take care of their animals. And so, one of the initiatives that I, that I was very proud to work with was that, an initiative that would essentially create a new offense for anyone that abandons their, you know, whether it's, you know, their dog or their cat, their animal. As we saw not too long ago, we saw a dog named Trooper that was left tied to a fence on, on the highway, and the owner had just literally left the dog to basically fend for themselves. So, this initiative goes to, goes to that, and to make sure we take care of, you know, those, you know, those animals that are obviously part of our families. And very briefly, just with the appropriations for Miami Springs, as many of you know, and I know that the mayor mentioned this not too long ago, we've been very, very fortunate and very, very successful in bringing back dollars to the city of Miami Springs. Certainly, since I've been elected in 2014, I made that a priority of mine, because at the end of the day, those dollars are our tax dollars. Our residents pay tax dollars, and we should be fighting up there to make sure that we bring back every cent and more. And so, I've made that a, a top priority. I've been very fortunate to work with a lot of legislators throughout my time since 2014. I know Representative Rizzo's out of town, but if not, he would be here. So, I've been very fortunate to work with him, very fortunate to work with former Senator Manny Diaz Jr., and also former Senator and now Commissioner Renee Garcia, as it relates to appropriations. And since I've been elected in 2014, you know, we've been able to bring back almost $15 million to Miami Springs. That is, in a, in a legislative environment, that is unheard of. For a, a city that is, small in nature, right? Small in nature, you know, for, for a city to receive over, over a decade period of time more state funding in millions than the amount of residents is, is absolutely, it's, it's, we're very fortunate. You know, I just want to highlight the last two years. You know, Miami Springs, we received the $1 million for Miami Springs Forest Drive. We also received $375,000 for the Senior Meals Program for the city of Miami Springs. In 2023, we received $750,000 for the Senior Meals Program. And we also received $150,000 for a beautiful war memorial to really honor our veterans, honor our service members, and really, just, it speaks to the, the pride and joy that we have in terms of our, our military service members and the folks that have served our nation so bravely. This, this past session, we were able to bring back $750,000, so almost $1 million for the Senior Meals Program. And I know that we still have, we still have some projects that will be coming down the pipe. I know I've certainly had extensive conversations with J.C. and have probably driven him crazy over, over, over these projects, but it's because, obviously, I'm a resident, and I really, I mean, this community means so much to me. It is where my wife and I met, in Miami Springs Middle School. And so, I love it. I'm so passionate about it. I'm so thankful for all of you to serve our community. I'm certainly so passionate to fight for our residents. And, you know, so sometimes I can probably be exhausting in terms of, you know, finding out what's going on with these projects, where do we need help, what do we need to do? But, you know, I've been very fortunate to work with a lot of good council members and city managers and deputy city managers and personnel all around. So, I really just want to thank you for always being so, so gracious, always going up to Tallahassee, really to meet with other legislators, get in their faces, tell them, "We need this money, we need this funding, we need this project." Because for me, that makes a big difference, and that shows to me, you know, certainly, your commitment is, is as big as mine, and, and I appreciate that so much. And just wanted to thank you so much for giving me this time to, to present to you. Thank you.
Thank you. We cannot thank you enough, Senator. I know that this legislative session was like, it's like a full-contact sport, and, and they weren't getting paid overtime for, time and a half for all the extended time. But it's, it really says a lot, the fact that you guys are being fiscally responsible, tightening the belt, trying to return as many tax dollars back to residents as possible. You guys are helping families, you know, kids that are on the spectrum, relief for small businesses. So, we're, we couldn't be happier, and the fact that we got the level of appropriations, I could tell you guys that not everybody got the appropriations that they wanted, and even, we, we got $750,000 for senior meals. That, that's, that's an incredible amount, even compared to other people and the appropriations that they got this year. So, go ahead.
I just, I, I wanted to mention one brief thing. You know, a lot, I, I know that every single community is searching for dollars.
Yep.
Right? Every single community, especially in Tallahassee, is, is really fighting for every single penny and every single cent, just because there's a lot of uncertainty in terms of the economic picture. There's certainly a lot of uncertainty as it relates to the international picture. You know, so, with that, I would, I would encourage you, and, and Miami Springs has been so great, so great to work with. I'm here with Alicia, which is my, my, I mean, she has been with me from the very beginning, and she knows how passionate, well, we both are passionate about appropriations, but she handles all of my appropriations. And she will, she'll be the first one to tell you, the sooner that we're able to get projects, the sooner we're able to, to get off and run, right? You know, so one thing that I would encourage you is just start formulating, you know, what the needs are, you know, obviously amongst the council and, and mayor under your leadership. You know, just identify what those needs are. You know, certainly, this past, I could tell you, this past session, I had a lot of municipalities where they were requesting things for their police departments. You know, so that might be an area where I would encourage you to certainly look at. There, there's, there's a good pot of money there, and there's, you know, certainly, when it comes to providing resources to our brave men and women in uniform, you know, it's, it's an easy argument, you know, certainly, certainly for me to make, but certainly for the appropriations chair to accept. So, I would, you know, I would highly encourage you to look at those things. I could tell you, not too long ago, we were able to get a 911 communications tower for the city of Hialeah in their, for their new Hialeah Annex area. That was about $1 million. Also, $1 million was their mobile command vehicle. City of Doral, city of Sweetwater. This year, they, they also received funding. Obviously, they have to go through the veto pen now, but, but they also received money for a command, a mobile command vehicle. So, again, I just tell you, just to give you an idea of, you know, things to kind of look at when you're, you know, obviously having your discussions on what, what those needs are. One thing that I've always focused on, aside from, you know, our elderly and law enforcement, is infrastructure. So, a lot of infrastructure projects are certainly, you know, water projects, whether it's the pump station on Hook Square, whether it is Forest or South or East Drive or Royal Point Sienna, all of those projects, or Oakwood, all of those projects, you know, that's something that, certainly, if you put it together, I'll be able to, to work it from there. I would encourage you, though, to, to look at sort of what that price range will be. Obviously, the higher that it is, the more difficult it gets, just because, you know, we're, we're constantly reducing our state budget, as, as, as I mentioned before. You know, with regard to our state budget, just to give residents a sort of a comparison, the state of New York, their state budget is north of $250 billion. They are fourth in population. We are third in population. And we operate with 100 and, what, 115? $115 billion, meaning that essentially, the state of New York is overtaxing their residents by $140 billion. So, that is, that, that's to give the residents a picture, to give you all a picture in terms of what, what we've been doing for, for decades now, and what we continue to do, and what we strive to do, which is really to put more of your hard-earned money back into your pockets, because at the end of the day, you earned it. And you are able to make better decisions with your money for your families. So, thank you so much again. Thank you, Mayor.
And again, I just, I wanted to say thank you, because not only is he a homegrown person here in Miami Springs who has just the tenacity, getting us appropriations, fighting for us. He's always been a huge advocate, but it's on top of that, what he does in terms of his other life, his military service, we could not be prouder of you, so thank you, Senator. Appreciate it. Okay, and next, I would like to call up our esteemed District 6 County Commissioner for some welcoming remarks. The, please, a round of applause for the Honorable Natalie Milián Orbis.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members and Miami Springs community members. Honored to be here as your new county commissioner, and what an inspiring night to join you all as you kick off your centennial celebrations. Congratulations on a beautiful logo, and to all the residents who work together, that is, it's the beauty of this city, is coming together and doing something so amazing. I look forward to working with you all and collaborating on our celebrations as, as you celebrate 100 years. Miami Springs is a vibrant part of District 6, and as your commissioner, I'm fully committed to serving this community, building stronger partnerships with all of you and advancing our shared goals. I understand the importance of preserving the unique character of the city while also supporting smart growth, public safety, and the quality of life of all of our residents. So, whether it's improving our infrastructure, expanding access to services, or advocating for your needs on the county level, I will always be a strong voice for your community. I wanted to come here and present myself, not, not only to you all, but also to your community, and to let you know that, you know, I'm your advocate and your voice on the county commission. Our team is here for you. We look forward to working with the city. We have our mobile office hours, which we host here the very first Monday of the month, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. every month. So, we thank you for continuing that partnership with us, and we look forward to bringing county services to you. And likewise, my door is always open to all of you, as it is to all of your residents. So, thank you so much. It's an honor being with you tonight, and thank you for your time. It's an honor being with you tonight, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have a great meeting.
And I did want to shout out our new county commissioner. Her office has really hit the ground running and been very engaged with our city, and they've, you know, she's only been in the position for a short time, and already, you know, she's met with our city numerous times, and we're really looking forward to working with you. So thank you again. Okay, all right. So we are going to move on in the agenda to 5C and D. We're going to call them up together. We're going to do a presentation of Miami Springs Employee Service Awards, recognizing Denise Rivera, and also recognizing Police Lieutenant Carlos Nunez. So come on up. J.C., do you want to?
Well, I don't know if Chief, you wanted to say a few words for Carlos, for Lieutenant Nunez? Yeah, you never had a lot of words.
I love this guy right here. You know, when I first was hired, he's the one that trained me, even when I was a public service aide, and he had to tell some of the subjects we were dealing with, he's like, hey, he's not a paramedic, he's a police officer in training. Remember that? It was something like, yeah, they thought I was a paramedic. And wealth of knowledge, wealth of experience, and he's dedicated his whole life to his department and this city. So I'm proud to say that he's been here 20 years, and I hope he stays another 20. Not sure, but, so, congratulations, Carlos.
Lieutenant, you want to say a couple of words?
I just want to express my gratitude, my thanks for the opportunity that they gave me 20 years ago. I can't believe it's been 20 years. Sometimes my back and my knees remind me of it, but I'm here. So all I can say is that I was privileged to serve this city for this long alongside a bunch of dedicated officers. No one better than this unit that you have here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Mayor.
Lieutenant, don't go far, we're going to present you with something.
And Mayor, now we, you know, we recognize another valuable member of our team, 10 years of service for Denise Rivera.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman. Denise has given us 10 years of service. She's one of our equipment operators that she drives for the city. Person with a great smile, great attitude every morning, gets the work done, gets everything spick and span, keeps the guys and the crew in check. And she's a tough person, but she gets the work done. I'm very glad to have her on my team.
Awesome. So thank you for your 10 years of service. Juan, do you want to present? There you go. And Chief? You guys can, no, this is Denise, and this is the lieutenant. You guys can take some pictures. I'll move the photo away.
If we just want to recognize him real quick.
Sure. We'd like, can we have our, the winner of this, so this last Saturday, we kicked off the centennial celebration with the Jazz Festival at the Lions Club, and there was a very competitive, as a matter of fact, that kind of questioned the results sometime, because everybody was good, but a very competitive Glenn Curtis look-alike contest. So would you like to please stand? We've got Glenn Curtis in the house. Mr. Thomas Hernandez was the winner, narrowly beating out Councilman Fabian Perez Crespo and Councilman Joseph Santin. So thank you, congratulations.
Joseph Dion. Joseph Dion. Sorry. Go ahead. So, obviously, this is the first stage of the competition, so even though you might have heard a rumor about $1,000, you have a shot at it in August of 2026. But for now, thanks to MyLum Supermarket, you get a $100 gift certificate.
Wow.
So enjoy it for now. And yes, thanks to Leonard Real Estate and New Partners Health have contributed $1,000 for the ultimate winner back in, hopefully, in August 26. But this guy has definitely a good shot at it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And so, we move on to 5E, and we are very pleased to have a swearing. We took pictures downstairs.
He has to go.
Yeah. Thank you. You gotta jump in your Curtis Jenny. All right, so we're going to bring up Chief Castillo for the swearing-in ceremony for new Police Officer Rafael Barreras and Police Officer Edgardo Bartra.
Good evening, council, good evening, city officials. I know I told you guys in the awards dinner that we had a waiting list of officers trying to work for us, and these two are on top of the list. So please join me in welcoming to the stage Officer Rafael Barreras. Okay, quick story about Rafael Barreras. So about a year and a half ago or so, I was at the gym working out, and he approached me and said, "Are you the lieutenant from Miami Springs?" And I go, "Yeah, who are you?" He goes, "Oh, my brother works for you." I said, "Okay, who's your brother?" He said, "Rafael Barreras." And I said, "Okay, good, he's a good officer, young kid." I go, "And your name?" Rafael Barreras. I said, "Excuse me?" He goes, "Yeah, me and my brother are named the same." I'm like, "Okay." But one thing about Mr. Barreras here, he told me that he wanted to be a police officer. So I tried to persuade him. I tried to tell him, "Hey, you could do the PSA route, you could be a dispatcher." He said, "No, with all due respect, I want to be a police officer, and I'm going to put myself to the academy." So a lot of people tell me that, but very few actually actually do it. And he did it. And look, a year and a half later, and look where we are. So a lot of times, I tell people, it's how you introduce yourself. I still remember that day. So congratulations. And a little bit of Rafael Barreras, he's 21 years old. He was born in Cuba and raised in Hialeah. He graduated high school in 2023 and built a strong work ethic through jobs at Starbucks, Mercedes-Benz, and security and brickle. Following his older brother's footsteps, he recently graduated from the police academy and now serves alongside him. We're proud to have him on the team. So thank you, Officer Barreras. Now, the second officer that I want to introduce to you is Officer Edgardo Bartra. Edgardo, Eddie, come to the stage. So, our recruiting coordinator, I told him, I said, "Look, we have a lot of young officers. They're good, but they're young." So I wanted a mix of veteran officers, because I know when I first started, we had an officer by the name of Tommy Lopez. He did 20-plus years of police work in Hialeah. And when he came to the department, he trained me, and he was just a wealth of knowledge. He was the calm, when you're dealing with something that's beyond thinkable, he was the calm, and he was able to develop me and develop all the young officers. So I say that we have that here in Edgardo Bartra. I told our recruiting coordinator, "You hit it out the ballpark. He has the potential to be that, and he's someone that we need here." So Eddie is a proud lifelong Miami Springs resident, who's been married to his high school sweetheart for 22 years. Together, they have three children, ages 22, 17, and 12. With over 20 years of law enforcement experience, Eddie now returns to serve the community that shaped him. A true full-circle moment. We're honored to welcome him to the Miami Springs Police Department. Let's give them both a round of applause. So, to save some time, let's swear each guy's name together. Okay? Repeat after me, put your right hand up. I state your name.
I, Rafael Barreras.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend
I am sworn to support and defend.
the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Florida
Constitution of the State of Florida.
against all enemies
against all enemies.
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the same
to uphold and enforce the laws of the United States the laws of the United States.
the State of Florida
the State of Florida.
the County of Miami-Dade
the County of Miami-Dade.
and the City of Miami Springs
and the City of Miami Springs.
that I take this obligation freely
I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservations
without any mental reservations.
or purposes of evasion
or purposes of evasion.
and that I will well and faithfully discharge
that I will well and faithfully discharge.
the duties of police officers
the duties of police officers.
of the City of Miami Springs
the City of Miami Springs.
acting to the best of my ability
acting to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will begin the traditional pinning of the badge. This moment symbolizes the support, sacrifice, and commitment that both the officer and their loved ones make as they begin this important chapter of service to our community. Rafael Barreras will be pinned by his brother, Rafael Barreras. Come to the stage. We'll do one at a time. Okay. Yeah. Okay, Eddie Bartra will be pinned by his wife, Vicky. Vicky, come to the stage.
Did their practice have a [inaudible]?
Is it like 2.0, 1.0, and 2.0?
I haven't thought about it yet.
Hey, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, so, thank you, we're going to move on, but again, thank you for being so anxious and eager to serve our community. We appreciate you. Thank you, Juan. All right, next up, we are moving on to open forum. So any people wishing to speak on any of the items of general business? Just a reminder, open forum is one-way communication, it is not a dialogue, it's an opportunity for residents to come and address the council. We will not be responding, but if there is anything in particular that you need help with, please feel free to approach staff or city manager, or approach one of us after the meeting, and we'll be happy to help you. And just a reminder, open forum is limited to, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Our city clerk will be timing, so three minutes to get your thoughts in. So I'd like to call up Omar Rodriguez, and please state your name for the record and your address. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor, for letting me speak and council members.
Step, bring the microphone a little closer if you want, just so that we could hear you.
Okay, perfect. Yes, so my name is Omar Rodriguez. I've been a resident for 30 years here in Miami Springs. My kids grew up here, and we've been here for that period of time. We've also have come to the city council meetings and for a lot of positive things. And unfortunately, the one I'm going to present to you today is a negative, so be the first one. My daughter is actually, on May 13th, she was acknowledged as Daniela Rodriguez Day, so she's contributed a lot to the community. She's actually won science fair two times in a row for the She's actually won science fair two times in a row for the state and represented Miami Springs in that. So a lot of positive things have come out of this. And I'm looking forward to the 100-year celebration that's gonna happen soon. So my concern is, what I'm voicing is the situation with Airbnbs. Okay, it's...I didn't realize how much of a problem it was until one landed next to my house. So we've been five weeks with endless parties and recklessness, parking issues, having to call the police for loud music, recklessness, underage drinking. I mean, it's a public safety issue. It's a big, big problem. So again, I didn't realize how big it was gonna be until it actually affected us, and it's affected us significantly. So it's something that I'm actually, I'm gonna ask you how you can help us start this process so that we can either bring it up for a vote and what's the actual procedure involved to do that. And I can also check in with you later, either via email or meet with you. But I just wanted to voice my concern publicly and make sure that this doesn't actually destroy the fabric of this community. Because I've lived here for those many years, and this community is a beautiful community. If we let that continue, it's gonna destroy this city. I will tell you, the city will turn into a hotel if it's not controlled. So that's my concern. And then you let me know how I can do it so I can voice my opinion formally.
Absolutely. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And there actually, there is a policy in place. And I encourage you to reach out to the city manager's office because there's definitely things that can be done. Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, we are moving on to item 7A. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the council minutes for June 9th, 2025. Okay, do I have a second? All right, we can approve that with a voice vote. So all in favor of approving the June 9th, 2025 regular meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right, the motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Item 8, we have no reports from the boards and commissions. And item 9, public hearing. So we'll start with item 9A. A resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Miami Springs approving or approving with conditions or denying a site plan application by Sky High Aviation Services Corporation to develop a three-story mixed-use building on the property located at 30 Canal Street in Miami Springs, Florida, providing for conditions and providing for an effective date.
Sylvia, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for accommodating me this evening. I didn't intend to be remote, but these are the circumstances. And I apologize if, as I go through my report, I hesitate a little. My eyes are still a little blurry. But this is a project that I think we all have been working on and kind of waiting to see come before you for a while. This is a property located, as you know, at 30 Canal Street. And it is approximately 10,000 square feet. It's a lot that is rectangular in shape. But not only does it butt the public right away of Canal Street, it also is adjacent to, and a butts to the rear, a public parking lot and a public alley. So it is bound by three points of circulation, which makes it a little difficult to manage the parking and internal circulation of the site. The property is located within the CBD, but also has the gateway overlay. And this is the first project that we have reviewed under the amended gateway overlay rules. So this applicant is requesting a site plan approval to develop a three-story mixed-use development pursuant to the recently adopted rules. Let's see. Let me see if I can read this. Okay, I'm going to go through the project description specifically. I mentioned it is a three-story building. It has one ground floor retail space and a total of 14 residential units. On two upper floors, there is parking also on the ground floor underneath the residential units. The applicant is requesting... Well, the original request was for .86 FAR with some of the FAR bonuses that we have in our gateway overlay, enhanced design and development quality program. There were some changes that were made to the site plan between the zoning and planning board and this meeting, which actually require a little bit more FAR than was originally requested. But this applicant actually has included some features in the design of the project that can warrant additional FAR. So we went through that and identified those. And I can tell you what those are in just a second. For context, the planning and zoning board reviewed the project on May 27th and provided feedback to the applicant. The first item in particular was to... The recommendation was to the council to reconfigure the ground floor, reorienting the front of the commercial units. There were two at the time that kind of lined up with the alley. And their recommendation was to reconfigure that ground floor so that those units would be oriented towards the street instead, adjusting the driveway and the parking configuration and coordinating with the Department of Public Works on the location of the egress and ingress in that reconfiguration. And the applicant, rather than waiting to come to the council to do that, went ahead and reconfigured the plan. So the plan that you had before you incorporates those changes that the planning and zoning board recommended. Now, by making these changes, a few others were actually... The changes that the planning and zoning board recommended resulted in other changes. For example, by reorienting the commercial space, the applicant now only has one commercial unit. It is deeper because it has to comply with a 30-foot retail depth that we have in the code. So it is only one space. It's a little bit larger than the original units were because of that change. And although the planning and zoning board had recommended that in that reconfiguration, the ingress and egress was... Let's see, was a one-way from Canal Street towards the rear parking lot. In conversations with Public Works, the applicant determined that their best course of action was not really taking that approach, but to try and go back to their original parking configuration. They have less spaces than they had been able to accommodate in the original scheme. What this means is that the number of off-site spaces is greater in this iteration than it was in the original proposal. That also means that the amount that is being paid into the parking fund is larger. Let me go to the details of that first. Sorry, I'm trying to focus here. Let me start by detailing for you the floor area ratio bonus and enhanced design and development quality standards. As I mentioned, in this district, the base FAR is 1.0, but properties can be developed up to an FAR of 2.0 by meeting these FAR bonus standards. So in this latest site plan revision, the gross floor area is 18,478 square feet, which is an FAR of... I'm sorry, 19,699 square feet. And the FAR is 1.969. And in the original plan, they had asked for 1.85 with the following EDDQ features. Art and public spaces for .20 FAR. White cool roof for .20 FAR. Low plumbing fixtures for .1 FAR. High efficacy lighting for .1. Photovoltaic system with backup battery for .15. And electric vehicle charging stations for .1 FAR. Now, as I said, because the FAR request actually was not updated, they did not ask for more than the .85 that the original proposal included. However, we did note in our evaluation of the building design and the updated site plan that the following features are also available to support the necessary additional FAR. They have an entry, a building entry feature for .05 FAR. They are going to be improving the alley. Through their conversations with Public Works, they agreed on certain improvements, which include lighting and resurfacing of that alley and the rear parking area, some additional landscaping, and that can give them up to .3 FAR. And there are also some right-of-way improvements on Canal Street that they're going to be making as part of a recommendation of the Public Works Department so that they could actually place a loading zone in that area. The soil is going to be refinished with grasscrete, similar to what the city has done on Curtis Parkway, and add some additional landscaping and site furnishings. And that can give them up to .2 FAR. So that's with regards to their FAR bonus. And then for parking, based on the number of residential units, this project needs essentially 32 parking spaces. And then for the retail unit, they need five point...essentially six spaces. We round up. So the total for the project is 38 spaces. There are 11 parking spaces that can be accommodated on-site, of which three are handicap spaces. And the applicant therefore will be required to pay a fee in lieu to the city for the remaining 27 required spaces. Let's see.
Sylvia, can you hear me? It's JC.
Yes.
I can jump in if I know you just recently answered your... So I can jump in if you'd like.
I'm about to finish, JC, if you want. Basically, I'm not going to go through all the details of our analysis for compliance, but I did want to just kind of speak to that. I know you're going to talk about the parking, but I'm just gonna wrap up if you don't mind.
Oh, that's fine. I was just thinking about you.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I really do. So ultimately, you know, the staff has reviewed it. Obviously, the planning and zoning board reviewed the earlier version, and they made the recommendations. The applicant has followed their recommendation with regards to the reconfiguration of the ground floor. We are recommending approval with a series of conditions. And, you know, part of the conditions include the payment into the parking fund, of course, as well as payment into the Art and Public Places Fund, that being one of the features that they... Well, they had proposed to install art on-site, but I think that the city attorney is going to explain that we do have an option for payment into the fund instead of installation of the art on-site, which in this case appears to be a better option due to the timing of your centennial celebrations and some of the things that are happening with our pieces there. But ultimately, we are recommending approval. The planning and zoning board recommended approval with conditions. I will mention that one of the things that the planning and zoning board said was that they would like to recommend to you to send the project to the Architectural Review Board. I don't know if that's something that you want to consider, but you know, this evening, we are not making that recommendation. We're just recommending that you move forward with the approval with the plans as presented and that you incorporate all the conditions that we have in our staff report. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, JC.
Okay, thank you, Sylvia. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Sylvia.
The, obviously, items...well, I think now maybe you want to open up.
I'm gonna open it up. I was gonna say, before we have discussion and talk about approval of the site plan, I want to invite anyone in person or online who'd like to speak on this item, 9A. Anybody like to come up and speak? This is being a public hearing. Come on up. Please state your name and address for the record when you come up.
Oh, she's with the architect. She's the architect. If you want to see renderings or something like that.
All right, but with that, we don't do that as part of the public hearing. Yep. I know that doesn't...okay. All right, nobody online? Okay, so we... I'm sorry? Come on up. Come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Roy Applegate, and 249 Navari Drive in Miami Springs. I'm a long-term resident. And I was just curious, when they mentioned the 27 parking lots, are those 27 spaces gonna be in the existing areas that now exist? Is that what we're talking about?
The way the code works, to my understanding, is they provide as many as they can provide. And whatever they're short, they pay a fund, they pay into the city's fund, parking fund. That fund is designed for the town to make parking improvements, improve parking, build new parking facilities immediately or in the future, depending on the scope. Those parking spaces, they don't have...it's not like there is a specific site where they're gonna have parking spaces to go park. No, it's not. They'll have to, in this particular project, park along Canal Street, probably. But they don't have reserved parking spaces outside of that.
So the residents who are going in that building will have to use the current public parking spaces that are existing?
Correct.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
All right, so we close that, open and close that public hearing. So thank you. So now... I...yes, go ahead. Come on up. But she's gonna do a presentation? Okay, I thought she had...okay, all right. Okay, she's waving her presentation to the public hearing. Okay, so now, I want to thank Sylvia again for catching us up to speed. I think a lot of us are aware of this. This development has...they've been very diligent about incorporating the conditions and recommendations of the city planners, of the zoning and planning board. So I opened it up for discussion to the council with regard to approval of the site plan.
To the chair.
Go ahead.
I think kind of you started to allude that, obviously, this applicant and this project, they've pretty much have taken everybody's recommendation and accepted them. And, and it's pretty much the spirit of what we did with the overlay district. Obviously, the parking fees, they're not asking for, you know, concessions on that part, or lowering the fees. Obviously, the intent of that is to ultimately go into a fund to help us, you know, find more space. And there are possibilities of that, so it's not something that is not even attainable. But ultimately, you know, the most important thing for me, listening to those things, was that obviously they were willing to pay exactly what the zoning says. And second thing was the commercial part unit. The spirit of the overlay district was to create more of a commercial area, walkability, and they recommended them to reconfigure that commercial to face Canal Street and take one of the units away. So that was a big deal to reconfigure, but to me, I was happy about that, because ultimately what you want is to have the best chance to succeed. So, you know, ultimately for me, I don't have any, any objections to, to the site plan. I think they did everything that our planning and zoning and our zoning allows.
All right, thank you.
Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Just jump in real quick, and I'm sorry. If you'd like, 9A and B are tied together. If you want me to get into some of the details, so that way, I guess for the, for the audience, they understand the development agreement, exactly what these, this developer is proposing or is gonna be paying, because this, this, this project conforms with the guidelines set for the Narco. It's, they're not asking for a variance, they're following the code. As part of that, they are, and, and we had a meeting with them, and like, you are aware that's $880,000 that you're gonna be paying. And they're like, yeah, we, we know. The only thing that they asked is if I can accept it monthly for like eight months? It'll still be well before the, the parking, I mean, the.
For the developments done?
Yeah, before the, the permit is even issued. They also agreed, instead of putting an art sculpture in during our meeting, they're like, well, we're gonna have three artists, the city can choose. And, and I told them that they can, instead of doing that, make a donation to the, to the city, or contribution to the city for the Glenn Curtis Centennial Project that we discussed recently. They said they're absolutely in favor of doing that. They'll give us, I think that code says 1% of the total value of construction, or $25,000, whatever's greater. They, they agreed to that. What else did they have? Like, as it was said before, they're making improvements to the, to the alleyway. And what, am I missing something else? Heidi?
For the public art contribution, the way it's drafted in the development agreement, and actually, before we go on, if we're gonna do this item, can we read the resolution title onto the record, please? I'll go ahead and do it. Item 9B is a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida approving a development agreement with Sky High Aviation Services Corp. for the property located at 30 Canal Street, Folio Number 0530240061170 relating to the development of a mixed-use project consisting of multifamily housing and retail uses pursuant to Section 150-070.1 of the city's land development regulations, providing for authorization, implementation, and an effective date. So your code, when, and this is the first project that we're doing like this, that utilizes FAR bonuses. First project following revisions to our gateway ordinance. And so this is the first time that, I think in the city's history, you have a development agreement before you. So this is a new agreement for the city, just a couple of points on it. As far, it's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of text in here that binds the property owner as the developer. This development agreement is also binding on successors to the property, so if they were to turn around and sell the property tomorrow, this agreement would be binding on a successor. As far as the parking, that total fee of the 880 can be, must be paid on or before the issuance of the master building permit. So my understanding is, is that they are looking to get their master building permit as soon as possible. Realistically, we're probably looking at at least four to five months. So that 880 would be coming in prior to building permit. As far as the art installation, they have agreed to a payment in lieu of the onsite art, so they will do that, as JC was explaining, the 25,000 or 1%, whichever is greater. With that in mind and understanding that there are interests of the city to do art projects more expeditiously, what we've drafted is that the $25,000, which is the minimum payment, will be made within 30 days of the effective date of this agreement. And then at the time of the master building permit, there will be, when you, when you're getting a permit, you provide an estimated cost of construction. If that estimated cost exceeds the $25,000, the, if 1% of it exceeds that, then they will pay the difference before the issuance of that master building permit. As Sylvia noted, there are a couple of FAR bonuses that, they actually have more bonuses than they need, so we've also provided some flexibility that if, so long as they don't exceed their maximum, their, their, what they've requested, the 1.969 max, they can eliminate except for the art bonus and the white cool roof, they can eliminate some of the other things if, in, in coordination with the city, they find that they don't need those. Other than that, everything else is pretty standard as far as development agreements. This is something that we will be refining, and so we have asked the developer to take a look at it. We'll make sure that the development agreement and the resolution, if approved tonight, are consistent with one another, and we always try to align those after the fact and make sure that everything that was discussed is actually what gets down into paper.
Heidi, do we have to, since we're doing 9A and B now together, do we have to open up another public hearing?
No.
Okay, great. All right?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
All right.
Mr. Applegate's question about the parking. From the schematics that I see, I, there are 11, correct me if I'm wrong, 11 parking spaces below the actual structure.
That's correct. I'm sorry, that was Sylvia. That, that is correct. I just wanted to.
And I think Juan said it's three?
And then two, right, then two of those are wheelchair, I hate to say this.
Juan said it's three handicap spaces.
Three handicap spaces.
See the one in the alley, and then two underneath, underneath, under the building?
There, there are three handicap spaces under the building.
All right, it's, well, it's not identified on this one, but, okay. So to his concern about the parking, there is parking under the structure. So the 27 is on the street. And I, and I passed by the street this week to see it, and I took pictures, and there's plenty of space on the street. I'm just hoping that the, the amount that we receive into the parking fund can go towards restoration, doing something pedestrian, more pedestrian friendly on Canal Street. There's so much potential there, and we need to do something to fix that up.
That'll be, if, obviously if approved, that'll be a discussion in the very near future, as far as what improvements we can do, because I think it'd only be appropriate for, to put it onto Canal Street and make improvements there, see how we can increase parking. Right now, it's like angled, and they're not really lined, and we can increase the, you know, the, the spaces out there.
It's inconsistent from, from where the UPS store is, all the way down to where that daycare is.
It is very inconsistent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would like to start by thanking Heidi for putting this together, working very diligently, and it shows how much you love what you're doing, you're great at what you're doing. We really, really appreciate it, and I would love to welcome the, the builders, Skyway. We need more businesses like this. We need a, this type of development where it encourages, you know, a residential base, family base, and businesses. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, do you have anything?
No, I, I think it was very hard to work within the confines, so they did a great job, and way better than what was there before, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, I, I do want to underscore that unlike previously, it happened at the beginning when we first did the overlay, where some, some spots on the street, street parking, were credited to the development, in order for that development to go through, they are paying into the parking fee fully. And so that is good news, because that, that means that we could use that, that funding in order to continue to grow the area and, and improve the parking in the overlay.
And to the chair. Just, this is amazing, you know, you guys are cementing yourself in our history as well by putting into the art fund and helping with the, so you guys are coming in, you're working with us, you know, it's amazing, you know, really appreciate it. It's awesome what you're doing.
All right, Mr. Mayor, question on the, also on the plans, the front of the building has a loading zone, so I think that helps aesthetically. I've seen other buildings on Canal Street where there's cars parked right in front of the building, so it helps to see that there's a loading zone in front. So I think moving forward, is that something we may ask of future projects, that the front is loading zone, so you don't have cars and trucks parked in front?
If it's not, if it's not already in the, in the code, that's certainly something that we can.
And they're maintaining, I see they're maintaining at least a couple of the existing trees, the tree canopy too.
Just to be clear, our code does not, our code actually requires that loading spaces are provided on-site with the project. Again, because of the constraints that this particular site, it's a small site, and we have a number of them in this district. And, you know, the, the envelope that we have with the building height and the setbacks, et cetera, makes it hard for applicants to reasonably imagine building, structured parking, for example. It's very, very expensive to do that. And it would be nearly impossible to do that here with, with the building height. So in this particular instance, the give and take of, of, you know, trying to meet the code and, and providing for this resulted in the loading zone being, being negotiated with, with Public Works to be provided as an improvement to the soil, actually.
Thank you, Sylvia. All right, yeah, and I, I just wanted to chime in in that these properties on Canal Street, you guys may remember when we did the tweaks to the overlay district, we pumped the brakes, at least the previous council did, pumped the brakes on, on expanding the extent to which, to which we doubled down on, on, on increasing the density in that area. So, you know, if, if we had done so, you know, it, it would have promoted a lot of property assemblage and doing, doing projects that have an even greater impact. Maybe in the future, that's something that we could look into, but given the fact that this was, if you guys remember what was there before, it was a bit of an eyesore. Given the fact that this is such a unique property and that it's small, and you're very limited in terms of what you can do, I think, I think that this project has, has checked all the boxes in terms of, of what they could do with, within the constraints, so. All right, if there's no further discussion, Heidi, can we vote on these together or separately? Separately, right?
Separate votes. And I just do want to make note of the parking requirement in the city. It is generally a little bit higher than other municipalities for residential, residential parking, so the calculation is based on what the city's requirements are, which is 2.25 spaces per unit.
Right.
So that's how we arrive at the number that's required. And I just want that to be clear, because I know in, in prior site plan approvals, we've, we've taken a closer look at that.
Yep.
So that's how we're getting to this amount. I think that's it. You have a staff report, you have a recommendation from your board, so you can take a vote on 9A.
Yep.
Is the site plan, and then we'll do 9B, which is the development agreement.
All right, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the site plan, which is 9A.
Like to make a motion?
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second. Erica, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Santin, just to be clear, a motion to approve the.
To approve the site plan. So motion to approve the site plan.
Vice Mayor Santin.
Yes.
Councilman Dion.
Yes.
Councilman Lamas.
Yes.
Councilman Perez Crespo.
Yes.
Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, and I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the development agreement, which would be 9B.
Make a motion to approve 9B development agreement.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Santin.
Yes.
Councilman Dion.
Yes.
Councilman Lamas.
Yes.
Councilman Perez Crespo.
Yes.
Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay. All right, so moving on to.
Quick question, just to make sure, the conditions were in the, the parking and the art fund, that's what we voted on, correct?
You, you voted on, on that and many other conditions that are. And incorporated into the resolution and the development agreement. So there's, there's a lot of conditions.
Okay.
We focused on, on two that we know are sort of more at the forefront, but there are a lot of technical requirements that, that need to be met.
All right.
Before we move on to the consent agenda, Mayor, I believe that there's a consent agenda item that we were going to pull from the consent agenda. It was 10F. We were gonna pull it to take it up after the consent agenda. It is a grant application in coordination with the Rotary Club.
That's the one where they were, since we have a couple of.
That's right, we should have, we should have pulled that during the order of business.
You know, it might fall, but we have a couple Rotarians that are officers, you know.
Okay. All right, so we will pull 10F. So can I have, so we'll do that one first, right? Okay?
If, if you want to do just the regular consent agenda.
All right, we'll do the regular then. Okay, so can I have a motion to approve 10ABCDEG and H? So excluding F, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus 10F?
Set a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay. All right, we can do that with a voice vote. So all in favor of approving the consent agenda, A, B, C, D, E, G, and H, please say aye.
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 All right, all opposed, say no. All right, so those, those motions carry, and so now we have consent agenda item 10F, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida approving the submission of a grant application to the Florida Department of Transportation relating to the Federal Transit Administration, Section 5310, Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Grant Program, Providing for Authorization, Providing for an Effective Date, and I believe we have some council members.
To the chair.
Go ahead.
Just for the, the air of caution, I'm gonna recuse myself as the president of the Rotary Club, even though this is the grant that we are approving to benefit the seniors, and there is no monetary benefit to the Rotary Club. I will be recusing myself.
Okay. And Councilman?
I'll be recusing myself as an officer of the Rotary Club.
All right. Don't go too far. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve 10F.
I'll make the motion.
I second the motion.
All right, is there any discussion?
I mean, no, I've seen, I've seen the work that Shuttle does, it's great.
All right, okay. You want to call the vote on that?
Sure. Councilman Lamas?
Yes.
Councilman Perez Crespo?
Yes.
Mayor Fahad?
Yes.
The motion carries 3 to 0.
All right, let's bring back in our council. All right, I don't mean 11 old business, we have nothing, so let's move on to 12, which is new business, and we have 12A in ordinance for first reading.
In ordinance of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, amending chapter 70 Traffic Code of the city's Code of Ordinances by amending section 70-02, Red Light Camera Enforcement relating to the placement and installation of traffic infraction detections at eligible intersections, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
All right.
Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Items 12A and B, they're, they go hand in hand.
Okay.
The the chief recently, and he'll come up if he if he needs to, the the chief recently, and actually it was a result of some complaints we received, we discovered that on 36th Street there are two intersections, East Drive and Sheridan, that don't have red light cameras. Received some complaints, especially on East, of, you know, red light takers and overall safety in that area. So this is the first step, we wanted to add two red light cameras on 36th Street at those intersections. This is what you're seeing before you.
As the city manager said, these are two intersections that are high volume, and vehicle traffic has gone up immensely over the past couple of years, has been known as a cut through area. So we contracted the company Redspeed, which we have a contract with them in our speed detection, and we contracted them to do a study, and a 12-hour study, those two intersections netted 70 violations. So obviously, those are two high prone to accident areas, they are a blind spot, and they're both a no turn on red, and those 70 violations, majority of them are the no turn on red, so that's why we did the study, and that's what the results came out.
Thank you, chief.
All right. All right, so we'll, I guess we need to vote on these two separately, right, A and B?
So Roger just has a couple of remarks.
Okay, go ahead.
Very quickly.
Yep.
Mayor, council, pleasure to see you always. The ordinance before you on first reading is a requirement under state law that any intersection where the city wants to authorize the placement and installation of these red light camera infraction detectors have to actually be adopted through an ordinance. This ordinance on first reading doesn't present anything special for today, it just designates these new two locations at Sheridan and East Drive, as the chief mentioned and the city manager mentioned. On second reading, you will be presented with a traffic study as well as other traffic data, I know that the police department is working on some other backup, which will actually be necessary for this council to consider. At second reading, you will be actually making a determination that these new locations where the red light camera detectors are going to be installed constitute a heightened safety risk that warrant additional enforcement measures. And that finding and determination will be based on that speed study and the data that's presented to you. So just as a bit of advice for next time, for the second reading, public hearing, please go through the the data, and of course, the chief, and and legal will be here to help as well.
And and as far as the data, there is a study in your agenda packet, it is being supplemented with additional information that we thought would be helpful to the council in making that determination, so you so you do have some data before you tonight, you'll just have more.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, so we look forward to that for second reading. Okay, so any discussion on the council on 12A?
So are we talking about an additional study, additional data that we're going to pay for?
Not.
Justify this?
No, so we we asked Redspeed to provide some, and and the police department to provide some more data in terms of accidents that have occurred at that site, tickets that have been issued, and other information about how the study was conducted, so that we can have that as part of the data that you consider, and make sure that we really have a complete record going forward.
Is there a timeframe that this data will be compiled, is this last year?
It's it's.
She said several years. The last two years.
About two years' worth of data.
Chair, the majority of the tickets that I hear is about 80% transitional people, not residents. Transient, okay.
You want to repeat that just on the.
Yes, the record of the traffic is on Northwest 36th Street, it's transient traffic cutting through, including East Drive.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? All right, like to entertain a motion to approve 12A on first reading? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Santin. Councilman Dion.
Yes.
Councilman Lamas.
Yes.
Councilman Perez Crespo.
Yes.
Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, so now we will take on 12B, which is the corresponding resolution.
And Mayor, this is a public hearing item under state law.
Okay, all right, so we want to open it up for public hearing?
Let's read the resul title, Madam Clerk. A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Miami Springs, Florida approving an agreement with Redspeed Florida LLC relating to the installation and operation of traffic infraction detectors for enforcement of red light traffic violations and related services in an amount not to exceed 138,600, 600 annually, providing for authorization, providing for implementation, and providing for an effective date.
All right, so I'd like to invite anyone in person online who'd like to speak on item 12B, anyone?
There's no one online.
Nope, all right, we close that public hearing. All right, any discussion from the council on 12B?
Can we?
Go ahead.
For the next reading, for some of the information, can we get, just based on current ticketing or what we think we're going to get, how long will it take us to get our money back on the 130,000?
So just to give you a, like a broad idea of how this works, right now we have five red light cameras in place right now, they're charging 48, 4820, so $4,820 per camera, per camera per month, and the way you get your money back is per month, and those cameras have been in place for the past 10 years, and we've netted close to a million dollars every year since that, since those cameras been put in place. So with the Redspeed deal, they're charging us 3850, so almost $1,000 cheaper per camera per month, so you get it based on the tickets that that generates, so it basically pays for itself and more.
Chief, I ask you a question, so is this traffic going westbound, it doesn't matter, west or eastbound?
No, it's only westbound, we have jurisdiction over westbound, so one of the, there's going to be three approaches, East Drive has two approaches, which is westbound on 36th Street at East Drive, and then southbound on East Drive at 36th Street, there are going to be two different approaches, so those are two different cameras that cost 3850 per camera, and Sheridan already has a camera westbound on 36, so now we're just implementing the southbound on Sheridan at 36th Street.
Do you ever have issues with eastbound traffic, I mean, that's, I know, that's divided because that's county?
Yes.
So how's that relationship with with that?
Well, the the county doesn't have the the red light camera program, a lot of our accidents that happen are usually that left turn on eastbound, that left turn to get on East Drive, and then our westbound traffic, which collides with them, and that's where a lot of our accidents occur, but now it's still, it would catch, it would capture that, and that could help us in accident investigations.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right, any further discussion? All right, can I entertain a motion to approve 12B?
To approve 12B?
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Santin.
Yes.
Councilman Dion.
Yes.
Councilman Lamas.
Yes.
Councilman Perez Crespo.
Yes.
Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Heidi, C and D, is that really new business, or I feel like these are discussion items, right? We're moving on? Okay, it's new business, okay, all right. All right, so we move on to 12C, request by Vice Mayor Santin to discuss approving a proposed centennial bicycle historical homes tour ride, that's a mouthful, co-hosted by the Miami Springs Police Department on August 23rd, Vice Mayor?
Yes, as a statement just says, request to approve this centennial historical homes tour, it's going to be led by some of the volunteers that are helping out with the Springview Bike, the whole objective of this is to get the kids in the community involved, to get a little bit of our history, so the goal is to, obviously after the chief approves the route, it's the safest for this particular route, from the Curtis Mansion, we want the, we'll end up back at the Curtis Mansion and have an event there for them to kind of, you know, give them a tour and educate them about the history of Miami Springs and Glenn Curtis and and our whole community, so I'm asking for approval, this event's a centennial, and it's going to be hopefully co-hosted by the police department.
Are there, Vice Mayor, are there going to be any stops along the way of the historical, and somebody's going to talk, or?
No, everything's going to end up back at the Curtis Mansion.
Okay, so it's just a ride, that starts at the mansion, ends at the mansion, so no one's going to point out historical homes, or I guess?
Well, there'll probably be someone, yeah, they'll stop and say something about it, but not, not going to knock on the door or anything like that.
Right, 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 got you. All right.
And that's going to be approved by the chief, once they give them a couple of the route, different routes that are closest to Curtis Mansion.
All right.
Vice Mayor, is the Historical Society involved in this somehow?
Yeah, he, they're planning the possible sites.
It's so they're, so the historical homes, the recommendation is coming, that recommendation's coming from the Historical Society?
Historical Preservation Board, Dr. Watson as well.
Is this just bicycles, or is this golf carts, or no, just bicycles?
No, just, we talked about bicycles, mostly to encourage the kids to get involved, like, just like they do, I think they had, the police had a particular event like last week, and and also they do the usual trip to the Springview School in the mornings, I think our Councilman Lamas has done it a couple of times. So this is the hope to obviously just, you know, get them excited about the centennial, and it's going to be on a Saturday morning at nine o'clock in the morning, obviously early enough, where traffic is less.
All right, are we going to close down streets, or just have an escort from the police?
The chief will.
Once, once we have the sites, we'll come up with the route.
All right.
Determine what we need to do.
Exactly, yeah, we have to find the other sites first, but more than likely we'll have bicycle officers not shutting down streets, but blocking intersections so the bicycles, riders can flow safely.
Got you, all right. Any further discussion or comments? All right, can I entertain a motion to approve 12C?
I motion to approve 12C.
All right, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Santin.
Yes.
Councilman Dion.
Yes.
Councilman Lamas.
Yes.
Councilman Perez Crespo.
Yes.
Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, all right, let's move on to 12D, a request by Vice Mayor Santin to discuss directing staff to explore amending the Centennial Committee Resolution to allow for the creation of an alternate committee member position with voting rights, Vice Mayor?
Well, this request is to kind of speed up the the process from here, you know, ongoing to the centennial celebration in August of 2026, we got a year to there, and we've had it before, a little bit of delays on occasion, and we have not a quorum, we've had a non-voting alternate that's there, present, and if she would be able to sit on the absentee space, they could vote, and we would have a quorum, and we wouldn't have to wait two or three weeks later to have another meeting, so it's just in case that we don't have a quorum with the committee, the alternate could step in and be a voting member.
I just thought they were supposed to be.
No, we have to change on the resolutions, why, it's never, it was never in place like that.
And so currently, we have two alternate members?
Yeah, that don't vote.
That don't vote.
And can't step in.
Seems like that would make things more efficient.
Mm-hmm.
So do we have a motion to approve 12D?
Motion to approve 12D.
All right, and a second?
Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Santin.
Yes.
Councilman Dion.
Yes.
Councilman Lamas.
Yes.
Councilman Perez Crespo.
Yes.
Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, okay, so that takes care of new business, we have nothing under 13 other business, so we move on to reports and recommendations, and we begin with our esteemed city attorney.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, I, with my sincerest apologies, but there is an a time-sensitive matter that I would like the council to consider as an action item, and I I know I don't like to do surprises on the day, so truly my apologies, you all may have received a notice from my firm as well as other organizations throughout the state about Senate Bill 180, that bill has been sent to the governor for execution, he has not signed it yet, which is why this request for you is is time-sensitive. Tonight, I'm asking you to consider adopting a resolution urging the governor to veto that bill, the reason being, the bill is intended to improve emergency management and disaster recovery, effectively following the three hurricanes that we had in 2024 and and the last prior years, but what SB 180 does, it introduces a series of amen, of prohibitions that would prevent local governments throughout the state from taking action with respect to zoning. It would prevent cities that are within a federally declared disaster county or located or partially located within 100 miles of a hurricane's track from adopting or proposing for one year after landfall a moratorium on construction, reconstruction, or redevelopment, any amendment to a comprehensive plan or land development regulations that are deemed more restrictive or burdensome, or any procedure deemed more restrictive or burdensome concerning review, approval, or issuance of a site plan development permit or development order. So it is, what what makes this even worse is that the bill authorizes individuals to sue local governments for declaratory or injunctive relief with a 14-day notice in court period, and if they are the prevailing plaintiff, they may be awarded attorney's fees and costs. Want to make sure I capture all of the, just the highlights, but effectively, this bill is, if adopted, it would affect any zoning restrictions that are considered to be more restrictive in the future, and it is retroactive to, I believe it's August 1st, if not September 1st of last year. So there are cities throughout the state that are looking at this and saying, hey, wait, we adopted regulations that are actually intended to improve
Right.
our community, especially following a hurricane, right, we want to have you raise your base flood elevation so that you don't get hit with flooding, and so that could, I'm not saying it is, but it could be interpreted to be a more restrictive regulation, and that would be prohibited. So it's, there are other parts of the bills dealing with emergencies, the state legislator, and I was reminded when I saw Senator Avila here tonight about this bill, so my apologies, but what is, what we were advised was that the state legislator was not going to reconsider their action on this bill during the extended session, this bill did pass at the state legislator, I think almost unanimously, but the section, and and the hat tip actually goes to Roger, who caught this while reviewing other aspects of this bill, and realized and brought to our attention that this prohibition is is really bad. So with that, I would like for you to consider a resolution urging the governor to veto Senate Bill 180, we can get this executed and sent to him.
How would we do that?
Tonight, I have a resolution, and and basically what I just explained is the content of the resolution.
All right, so then we would vote on it tonight, right now, because we don't have a choice, right, we don't have another meeting until?
In the interest of time, and and this bill would take effect July 1st, so we are concerned that the governor may sign it at any time. If he does sign it, and and it gets adopted into law, we have other ideas that we'll discuss with you, but we are hopeful, and there are cities around the state that are sending letters, adopting resolutions, and really trying to avoid this from becoming law.
And it's it's your experience, since your firm, you guys represent other municipalities, that there is the same kind of raised eyebrow to this, what it appears from what you're telling, it seems like pretty onerously.
It is, it is onerous, I can tell you that I have seen personally, just last week, North Bay Village adopted the same resolution, the city of Winter Haven has sent a letter asking the the governor to to veto the bill, the town of Cutler Bay has also sent one, there's another city somewhere in North Florida, Central Florida, so, and and their reasons are exactly as we described, like, you don't want to be prohibited from changing your zoning code for the better.
Right.
And all because you are 100 miles from something that happened, and maybe you weren't affected at all, so.
Okay, and what's, what's the timing on that in terms of, what's the deadline for the, how long does the governor have in order to? the, how long does the governor have in order to sign it or veto?
I believe he has until July, I think it's 15 days from transmittal. Don't quote me. He received the bill last Wednesday. So I believe he has until next week. But we never know when he's going to.
Right, but he could approve it right away?
Yes.
Okay.
If you want, you just, you guys can give me authorization to, to look further into it and work with the attorneys.
We can do that.
And we can, we can analyze, see if there's any potential pitfalls or anything like that.
Right.
Because I, when dealing with a state, there's like a delicate ecosystem.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure we don't trouble the wrong people.
Yeah.
So let me jeopardize any future.
So can that be done through consensus then, directing staff, authorizing staff to?
So the alternative, and thank you, J.C., for bringing that up. What we can also do is do a letter. One city wanted to do a resolution, so that's, that was sort of at front of mind for me. But we also have a letter that we can transmit to the state, so I can work with J.C. very quickly to get that out after he's made the appropriate investigation.
Yeah, I think if we do that, we can make sure that all bases are covered. So yeah, so then is there consensus on the council to authorize staff to work with our city attorney to do, to look into a letter in opposition?
Yes, I'm in favor. Yes.
Okay.
I found it interesting that it's, I'm reading it passed almost unanimously in the House and Senate, but it's going to be a detrimental impact to local government, so that's.
It always is, right? Isn't that what the state does?
And there's other, there's other redeeming qualities of the bill.
Right, it's just that particular language.
My understanding, and it's, Roger had to leave for the evening, but my understanding is that some of this language was added later in the session and may not have been as adequately reviewed.
Yeah. Yeah, we know some things got kind of shoehorned in during that extended session.
Do you feel like a resolution would be more impactful for the?
I think at this point, whether it's a letter or a resolution, it's something letting the governor know to please veto it.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so definitely, I think that we have consensus to authorize staff to work with our city attorney to, to do that. Okay, did you have any other reports or recommendations?
No.
Okay, all right, our city manager?
Yes, earlier today, when Senator Avila was here, he mentioned, you know, a number of projects he gave us funding for, so I, and I, and I have talked to him and I will give him more information, but did want to let the residents know, a lot of these projects, they're, they're under construction, they're coming to a completion. The Veterans Memorial was done, East and Oakwood Drive, that's Browning Third, coming, coming home soon, coming down the, you know, scratch. We have Hook Square, that one's already almost 95% complete. We have just today extended one of the grants. The design is completely done, that's for South Drive. And then right now, we're, we're just, last year, last season, we got legislative session, we got.
Forest Drive.
Forest Drive. And so we're working on that as well.
Yep.
So yeah, we had a lot of projects.
Yep.
And we're just trying to bring them all.
Super lucky, yeah.
All right. Did you have anything else, J.C.?
And that's all I have for now.
All right. Assistant city manager?
I just want to remind everybody about the events that are coming up, the Popsicle Wednesdays at the Aquatic Center at 6:00 PM every Wednesday for the summer. We also have the July 5th Car Show, 5:00 PM at the Circle. We have the Community Bike Ride Wheels and Shields on July 16th at 5:45 at the police station. And then we have the Miami Springs luau, July 20th from 12 to 5:00 PM, pre-sales are required.
All right. Okay.
July 20th.
Okay, move on to 14C, our city clerk?
Not much, just a reminder that our next meeting is July 24th, which is our millage setting. And you will have another item, I believe, the red light camera will be on that one too, so.
All right.
And you have a hearing next Monday.
We have an appeals hearing on Monday.
As a board of appeals.
Board of Appeals next Monday.
Yep. All right, okay, city council. Vice Mayor, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things, thanks to all those that participated in the Jazz Festival. Turned out great. We were worried a little bit in the first half of the week, but everybody seemed to got enthusiastic about listening to the jazz music. And also, thanks to our councilmen, we, and both of them who actually participated, we had a nice turnout and everybody got excited and had a lot of fun with it, so we appreciate the efforts. But obviously, the winner was worthy of a hundred bucks and possibly a thousand dollars next year. The second thing I wanted to say was, and it's Charlie's Ice Cream, only because Charlie's been there 10 years and he's a resident of ours. And honestly, to me, if I go to Ice Cream, that's the place I go to. And he's celebrating his 10-year anniversary on Sunday at 3:00, so if anybody's around, go over there and support. I appreciate it. And the rest of us, enjoy the rest of your summer. We'll be back here on July 24th.
Yep.
Yeah, well, we'll be here back on Monday, but July 24th, we'll be back, so everybody have a safe summer. Enjoy.
All right, thank you.
I like to start by saying congratulations to the chief and to the city for the two new officers. It's great to be a part and see your department, our department, become a stronger, you guys are the backbone of our community, so it's definitely great to continue to support you guys and see you grow. Congratulations. I want to thank Buzz and Kathy Fleishman for the event they put on a few weeks ago for Flag Day. And Info, they gave a great speech and they let the veterans speak as well. Definitely an organization I recommend to look into. And the Lions Club and Elizabeth Fisher for hosting the Jazz Festival. I think we should maybe recognize them at some point, the Lions Club, because they do a lot in the community. And going to miss you guys, look forward to coming back, believe it or not, so.
All right, thank you. All right, Councilman Lamas?
Just want to thank the Centennial Committee for the great kickoff, the Jazz Festival. Really nice, very different, and it was a great event under the stars. I'm looking forward to more of those. Hopefully, it's an event we can keep for years to come. I think that one will stick.
I want to echo the sentiments also on the Jazz Festival. I want to particularly congratulate Sandra Duarte from the clerk's office for the work she did Saturday. She really went above and beyond.
Yeah.
Okay, and you know, I'd like to learn from that event. Let's take what worked, what didn't work, because there's going to be a lot more. And this is a great opportunity for the community to get involved. You know, it's easy to, it's easy to complain about things that don't work in the city, but here's something that works. And there's going to be a lot of things that work, so let's get out there and celebrate our history. So get involved with the Centennial Committee. There's a lot of things that need to be done, so, and we hope to see you at the next event. And I wanted also to thank Juan Benner today for putting those two oak trees. I don't know if, Eric, were you able to get the pictures? Yes. So in front of my house, I see this 30-foot-plus oak tree coming down on Curtis. We had the police blocking off traffic. And for a while, even when I was running for office, I was like, when are they going to replace those trees? When are they going to replace those trees? And then I saw the holes in the ground like a week ago and asked J.C. what's with the holes? And so now we know what's in that place. So thank you, Juan, and your team for, for making that great transaction, right, to save two trees from one place and put them where they needed to be now. So I hope, I hope they get watered, probably on July 4th, they'll get a lot of water from the splash zone. And I think that's it, that's all I have. I'll see you guys Monday and after that, have a great summer.
One thing to add, I brought it up to Juan, he doesn't live in the city, but I think he spends more time here than most people. Six in the morning, there's Juan, eight o'clock at night, there's Juan. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Put a lot of, a lot of effort and it really shows. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Vice Mayor?
To get two mature oak trees, that's a great job. That would be like another 20 years before we get that, so thank you.
That's why I made him Cuban coffee, I took it out to his teeth.
We appreciate it. To the chair, just want to make sure that even though we didn't see the renderings of the project, they'll, residents will be able to see that online, right? So there shouldn't be no problem in being able to have access, so.
Yeah, they're part of the agenda backup.
All right.
All right, okay, and so again, I think we had a productive meeting. I want to thank you guys. I want to say happy 4th of July, 4th of July is coming up, everybody be safe. And apart from our brief meeting we're going to have next Monday for Board of Appeals, we'll have the millage cap setting meeting in July. That is to set the cap, that's not going to be the millage rate, just as high as it'll go. And then we'll start again, and I guess we've got to hit the ground running. So thank you to everyone for all your work. This meeting is adjourned at 8:56.